Welcome everyone. If there's anyone in the audience that might want to speak tonight and either the session on agenda items are at the closing of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, please fill out one of the forms that's in the back of the room and hand that to our clerk, Mr. Stewart, when you come forward. Roll call, Counselor London.
Present.
Counselor Spidey.
Present.
Counselor Bearden.
Present.
And Counselor Wilson is out recuperating from some emergency surgery, so he'll be back with us shortly. Y'all have a copy of the minutes that were sent out for the pre-council and the regular council meeting on September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen? Do I have a motion to accept those as submitted or are there any modifications?
Make a motion that be accepted as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Motion carries. Counselor Spidey, would you be kind enough to take on the current bill payment?
Sure, I make a motion for the approval of current bills for payment in the amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Do we have anyone in the audience that might have a professional or consultant type report? Alright, thank you. Mayor, your turn sir, if you'd like to do your part.
Yes, I'll move from here. Just a couple of things to highlight a few things that happened since we met last. Whistlestop Festival was this past Saturday. It's very well attended, a nice festival, beautiful weather, and so that all turned out very well. National Night Out likewise on Tuesday evening was very well done, very well attended. Many of you were there. Appreciate the efforts of the police chief in coordinating that, and I will say that he was very deliberate and diligent and got it, if not exclusively funded, mostly funded from donations and community support. So that was another great success coming together as a community. A while back you all had approved that we apply for a grant for the police department. I'm happy to tell you that that initial grant that we applied for was approved. It's just slightly over ten thousand dollars, and so we're grateful for that money coming to the city. And then on the last day of this month, Halloween, we will have trunk or treat. It's a new activity for the city, providing a safe, friendly, family-friendly environment here in front of our buildings, from the library down to this corner. We'll have, each of the departments will be participating, some other civic clubs, booths, nonprofits, businesses, and others will be participating in that. So bring your kids, your grandkids, come out, you can even come decorate your truck if you want, and pass out candy as well. So that should be a fun time and a safe time for the children of our city. I want to introduce to you Nicole. Nicole is here to speak on behalf of the Arndale Community School PTA. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I do this?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Somebody turn it on before it's not working.
There we go.
There you go.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to let us come and speak on behalf of our school and our PTA. My name is Nicole Paulin Martinez, and I am the vice president there. And we're very excited to plan this year a fall festival which will benefit not only our school, but we believe it can benefit the businesses and the individuals in this community. Our goal is to partner with businesses and with as many of you as we can to provide a great experience for our kids and for the members of the community. We do hope to invite all of the community to this, and we want to partner with businesses and give them an opportunity to also share their business with us through booths and set up of, you know, their cards and display, whatever things that they will have also. In doing so, we'd like to ask for you to provide lighting. We need four tower lights for the back end of our school building, and that's our request from you guys tonight.
Thank you so much. So, no, we're there.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we have online, but we'll check on that in a second.
Thank you.
So, thank you Nicole, we appreciate you being here. We're happy to have the school in this community. Speaking of schools, I will just share with you very briefly. City Clerk and I had a meeting today with Dr. Pouncy from Johnson County Schools, and they are in the process of a major, major capital expansion campaign where they're remodeling, building, rebuilding schools. And some of that will have an impact on Irondale. I think I could say ultimately, aggression will not be a part of Johnson County school system. That's not all finalized yet, but those students will become a part of, actually the community school and Grantswood School now will expand to both of those being kindergarten through fifth, I changed, kindergarten through fifth, and will transition on up in the number of students. So we're rebuilding some new buildings, remodeling some buildings, adding some space, and we'll hear more about that and share more about that in the future, but I just want to let you know that's coming down the pipe. And will have, will have an impact, hopefully a positive impact on our community.
Thank you, appreciate it. Do we have any department heads in the audience that have a report tonight? Any comments for fire? Alright, thank you sir. Now we'll go to any council, standing committees, or special committee reports. Okay, I'll lead all of the council tonight if I may. Just, I promised a quick update on the VELAs, the development of the old Mountain Brook Swim and Tennis property. Based on the latest approval, we will now have fifty-two home sites in that location. They have three pre-commitments, they have not closed on those. It's now up to six, that started out with three, they're now up to six, which gives them the ten percent they wanted before they started building spec homes. So when they get the commitments on the six, they will start six plus five additional spec homes. So that's underway. The roads are in place, the pool's in place, so they're coming along with the development. No set time yet for final build-out, but there's a lot of movement considering what they ran into in infrastructure. And that's all I have for tonight. Counselor Bearden?
Well, my computer just died.
Counselor Spidey?
Good evening. Just wanted to echo what the mayor said about Whistlestop attended, both me and my wife and my two little girls, and just had an absolute blast. It was actually so big, I don't even think we saw everybody. So that was, that was really, really neat event, enjoyed it very much, couldn't have asked for better weather. And then the other night on Tuesday, the reason we're here tonight, National Night Out, done over in historic Irondale, first north, great event, had a lot of people out. I know, I see a few faces here, I know we were, most of us were out, but just a really great opportunity to rub elbows with some FBI and some police officers and things like that. There were a lot of businesses came together and were doing different things, so just a big thank you to everybody who participated in National Night Out.
Thank you so much. Counselor London?
Well, I just want to say good evening everybody, good evening. And also, thank you, Ms. Nicole, for coming forward. I used to be on that PTA board, I know that a long time ago, so I know how to, all the hard work that's out, I have to put in, all of that, so just whatever we can do, you know, we're always willing to help.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it. Hopefully we'll get some basketball going out there.
Ah, there it is, never know, never know. We talked about that thing.
Thank you. Counselor Bearden?
I'll go read some of the bits for the senior center, but that's gone on now. But I will suggest that you go about senior center and you pick up a monthly newsletter and calendar. I think they have a few copies here at City Hall too, if you want to pick up that. Anybody's fifty-five or older is welcome to be involved with the activities at senior center. But something I do, I'm excited about, and I won't be able to attend, is Doris Hydock will be doing one of her stories next Thursday, October the twelfth, I think at six o'clock if I recall from what I was just looking at at the library. If you've never heard her, I think, if I'm not mistaken, she's the president of Irondale and she's a storyteller. And if you've never heard her, you have missed the treat, so, and they are, seating is limited, they don't have a room that's much bigger, any bigger than this one. So get here, get early, and the last two times I went, I had to stand to listen to her say. It is, she, it is a fun evening with Doris, so come to that if you can. And that's all I got right now.
Counselor Spidey, you raise your finger.
I did, and I apologize. Brett, you guys are doing the firefighter sponsoring the CPR class, correct?
I don't know, I've not been made aware of that.
Okay, for some reason I thought I saw something on Facebook, disregard. My wife said she was going to, and I think it was fourteen dollars, but I cannot remember the date. I thought it was you guys, but I could be mistaken. I apologize.
Thank you so much. Do we have any reports of boards and non-council committees? Alright. Counselor Spidey, since you have a modification on one of the resolutions, would you go for the approval of the agenda?
Sir, I want to make a motion for the approval of the agenda, except for the fact that on resolution number two, which reads twenty-seven R sixteen, request the Irondale Commercial Development Authority to remit two hundred thousand of its net earnings to the city of Irondale. I would like to add that in addition to the two hundred thousand net earnings that they have on hand, they also deed back to the city, the building, which earns seventeen thousand dollars in monthly rent to the city as well.
Okay, with that modification, do I have a second to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Now, do we have any public comments on agenda items only? And as you come forward, would you be kind enough to hand our city clerk, your piece of paper identifying yourself? Please, ma'am.
I just have a few questions on the agenda items, in particular those that deal with education. The first question I need to ask is, is the city currently at a deficit right now? Yes. And as a tax payer, I don't understand, and I, it's not that I don't support education, I do, that's our future, but we're at a deficit, and it's not a small dollar amount, it's a significant amount. Am I correct in my understanding?
You are.
How can we be spending money that we don't have?
One thing I will add, and that's why I want to make sure that we mentioned it, is that that money was allocated from last fiscal year's budget, which actually did not close at a deficit.
I understand that.
Okay.
But we're at a deficit right now.
Yes ma'am.
So if I had twenty thousand dollars last year, but I'm at a negative twenty thousand dollars this year, how can I spend money that I don't have?
I understand it.
I'd really like y'all to really think about this, because we can't be spending this money. The other question I have is, when I was a student in, at all grade levels, and many of these are extracurricular activities, we had sponsors, band sponsors, baseball sponsors, football sponsors. Do these schools have sponsors where they can raise money to do these kinds of things? If not, we should consider having them start doing that. This is a lot of money, and we don't have it. So for that reason, I'm asking you, please, vote no on these things, because we just don't have the money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any more comments on agenda items only? Alright, thank you. Then we'll start with first order of business on the agenda, which is the resolved resolution two oh one seven R ninety-five approves the general fund budget for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen dash eighteen in the amount of seventeen million, eight hundred and fifty thousand. And Counselor Spidey, any comments on that when we call it a vote? Do I have a second?
I make a motion for the approval of twenty seventeen R dash ninety-five.
Second.
All those, let's do a roll call on that if we will, since that's so important. Counselor London?
Yes sir.
Yes? Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Bearden?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank y'all very much, gentlemen. Item number two, resolved resolution two oh one seven R ninety-six, request the Irondale Commercial Development Authority, and David, would you go ahead with the wording since you had?
Sure, the resolution twenty seventeen R dash ninety-six requests the Irondale Commercial Development Authority to remit two hundred thousand of its net earnings to the city of Irondale, in addition, deed back to the city, the building that earns seventeen thousand dollars monthly to the city. In rent.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Remembering all you're doing is doing a resolution that puts the question, it is not, we cannot make a formal request, alright? Let's do a roll call on that one too. Counselor London?
Yes.
Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Bearden?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Spidey, I'll let you go ahead and put that one on the floor if you will, on the next one since it's a financial committee item on extension of order, if you will.
I make a resolution, I make a motion that resolution twenty seventeen R dash ninety-seven extends the water department budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen budget to fiscal year twenty eighteen budget.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let's do a roll call on that since it's budget related. Counselor London?
Yes.
Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Bearden?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you, and we pass it. Okay, alright, the next one is resolved resolution twenty seventeen R ninety-eight authorizes the mayor to apply for a grant through the community foundation of Greater Birmingham to rehabilitate Roughman Park in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Motion twenty seventeen R ninety-eight be moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. And the next one is resolved resolution two oh one seven R ninety-nine approves a restaurant retail liquor license for James or King located at fifty-four twenty-nine Beacon Drive, Irondale, Alabama, three five two one zero.
Motion twenty seventeen R ninety-nine be moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Resolved that resolution two oh one seven R dash one hundred authorizes the mayor to provide a ninety days notice to Grantsville Shopping Center to terminate the dog park lease.
I make a motion that resolution twenty seventeen R dash one hundred be approved?
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, now we move into the school items.
Mr. Stewart, point of order on this, because it's been mentioned a couple of times on the, I think, and we can have the attorney clarify for me, I think since we are in two thousand and eighteen, and we have a budget for two thousand and eighteen, these cannot be charged back to a previous year. You can approve these, but I think they will be in the two thousand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, two thousand and eighteen budget year, and because they're not budgeted, you will have to designate a source of funding for them, but I'll defer to, if I'm correct.
And that's correct, and the two thousand and seventeen budget is over at September thirty, and you just approved the two thousand and eighteen budget. So these items are unfunded expenditures that would require adoption as you adopt in ordinance. You'd have to have a vote of all of the council members to unanimously consider it, and then have a vote to, vote on each item.
So could we go back to the, to the budget?
I make a motion that resolutions twenty seventeen R one oh one through R one eleven be postponed till a later date, till we can have time to discuss them, along with the rest of the budget.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Question, could we go back to number one, to the budget, and discuss the budget? I know it's been approved, could we go back, number one, and discuss the budget, and maybe amend the budget with this in it?
I think you're going to act on this motion.
Yeah, we still got a motion in play. I will second that motion to get the vote and move on from that one. So, Terry, would you repeat your motion to table?
I make a motion that items, no, seven through seventeen, that would be resolutions R twenty seventeen, I'm sorry, twenty seventeen R one oh one through twenty seventeen R one eleven be postponed till we can have further discussion on the budget at a later time.
Okay, and I have seconded that, so I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Fifty-five.
And I know because we've already stated that these resolutions that are, I understand the problem with the previous ones, but the, we've already stated these education resolutions are coming out of the twenty seventeen budget, so are they not titled correctly?
The attorney just said that they were, since the twenty eighteen budget's been passed, they'll be on the twenty eighteen budget now.
So since that, can we go back, my point, can we go back to the budget, number one, and amend that budget with this money in that budget?
Which is what you, what you would have to do, and, what you would have to do. You can, you can pass these, which is essentially what Counselor London is saying. You can pass these as, you have to go to the form of an ordinance to vote and to get it done, but it will be, it will be accrued to the two thousand and eighteen budget, which is what you were asking, but because it is non-budgeted, you will have to say what the source of funding is for these if you pass them tonight, just like you would any other non-budgeted item, because they're not in the budget.
Well, if it's a, if it's going to be considered an un-budgeted item, then it would require unanimous vote here tonight. And if it does not receive a unanimous vote tonight, then it would roll over to the next council meeting for a vote on. It would be treated just like any other un-budgeted item that would come before the council, and it has to be passed by unanimous consent. But if it's not passed by unanimous consent tonight, then it would roll to the next council meeting, and that would be decided by majority vote.
You have, you have to have two votes. One's, it requires a unanimous vote to consider it for tonight's meeting, and then you have a second vote to approve the actual items. And that's to be passed without, it doesn't have to be unanimous.
So you're kind of treating them going through the process of the, like, the ordinance.
Well, I will tell you that it will not pass by unanimous vote tonight.
Well, I would have to go.
Till we have, can have some discussion on it, because it's a big waste in time.
If that's the case, it's best you just go ahead and go with the amendment to postpone it.
Well, it's in light of the fact that this is new information, I mean, we're, we're kind of nearing the headlights right now. Do we need to go back and put the motion out again to table till we can review it and see where we go forward? That would be my thought, because we can't, we can't table it based on a fifty-fifty buck, correct?
No.
Has to be, has to be majority.
Right.
Right.
I don't believe we have another option tonight, gentlemen.
And you can't pass any of them without unanimous tonight, and that won't happen.
So a sure choice, whichever way you want to do it, either, you try to get it through or you postpone, it's a sure choice.
Would someone like to make a motion again on tabling these till the period, and if we call it a table of the.
Okay, if it's somebody you voted, no, we'd have to make that motion reconsideration.
Okay. David, that would have to be you or John.
I make a motion that resolution twenty seventeen R dash one hundred through.
One hundred and one.
Sorry, my bad. Twenty seventeen R dash one hundred and one through twenty seventeen dash R dash one eleven be tabled.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call, Counselor London?
No.
Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Bearden?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. This time we will take any public comments in the council on any non-agenda items.
That's a question.
Report it please.
My question is, I know this has happened before, this same thing happened before, is this something that we just realized tonight, or have we all?
Well, we heard, you know, a question was raised and Rob gave an opinion, so I'm going forward.
This, this agenda's been out a long time now, and the budget is number one, so what you're saying, if the budget would have been number eighteen, we could have got through?
Well, these, these would have had to been put on the budget before we could have.
If we'd have passed these educational before we approved the budget, would it have went through then?
As I see it, again, I can be corrected, as I see it, you had two options in terms of budget. You had an option to extend the two thousand and seventeen budget, which you all discussed last night, I think it was?
Monday night.
Monday night. Okay, sorry. So that's one option. You've got, you've got to operate under budget. You could extend last year's budget, or you can approve this year's budget. And you approved this year's budget, and then the question came up a couple of times about, well, where do these funds come from? You can't, you can't go back till a year that is already gone. I'd have every department head in the city coming to me and saying, well, I didn't spend money in my budget on two thousand and seventeen, so I want to, I want to, I want to hang on to it, since I know the budget will be tight for two thousand and eighteen, I want to hang on to that. So those are your two choices.
So the statement that I made about that money being allocated from the previous year's budget was incorrect. Am I, am I hearing you correctly?
What was your statement?
The statement was, is that when, when she made her comment, I said, the funds that are allocated for these expenses are coming from last year's budget, those have been set aside from last year's budget to take care of these items, so in that, that fiscal year's budget didn't close with a deficit. And everybody shook their heads in agreement, so I was good with that. That's why I replied in the manner I did, so I guess what I'm saying was I, was I incorrect in making that statement? Because I was only going off the information that I had provided.
I'd have to let Rob answer that question.
Not, you weren't, you were not incorrect if you voted to extend the two thousand and seventeen, then you would have had use of those funds to fund these educational items. And after you approved the two thousand and eighteen budget, that former budget was dead, and so these become unfunded, and the fiscal year has happened.
Right.
But still, my question, we knew this, we knew from Monday night that we was going to put this budget on the agenda for tonight. We, we all knew that Monday. And I don't, I don't think we heard anybody up here talking about funding for, for these projects. But tonight, you're telling us, we're coming here right before we get ready to vote for these funding, you're saying just because we approved the new budget, we can't fund these projects. So my question is.
That's not, that's not what.
Tonight, we can't vote for, we can't, we can't, we can't afford it.
That, that is not what was said. I clearly said that you can, you can pass this and fund it tonight, you can do that.
Because unanimous vote, but.
You do have, yeah, you do have.
But if we'd have approved, if we'd have decided to extend last year's budget, we would have had to go through all of it.
Well, I didn't want to be quoted correctly.
Well, I'm going to ask you that, I'm going to ask you this way, if we'd have decided to approve the last year's budget, it just extended last year's budget, then we could have just went down the line and funded these projects, what we're saying?
With a vote.
With a vote, just one, with a, with a, just a majority vote. So my question is, this has been on the agenda for a long time, did we just decide tonight that we couldn't, couldn't proceed, or this is something that we decided middle of the week, and we decided, or, and my second question is, if we'll put these, an education item first and approve the budget last, would these items went through?
No, I don't have a problem with, I didn't see any in here.
But I, I understand what you're saying.
But I was like David, I, I.
I understand what you're saying.
Till Rob said what he did, that it's.
But you're not, you're not.
In the budget, we need to, we need to get it.
But you're not, but you're not.
Well, Counselor London, clarification. We had the meeting Monday night. I repeated very clearly, you had two options.
We all knew.
I followed up with counsel, with, excuse me, our city clerk, James Stewart, today, because he had not modified the resolutions to take out the youth committee recommendation, which would have killed everything on the agenda anyway had he left it in. I was not knowing what was going to come up tonight, we did this. The reason I moved everything up above that is. The reason I moved everything up above that is because we need to do our regular business for the city and then go to our extemporaneous business for the schools. And that's the way I feel about it.
My question is, I haven't answered.
Well, but you still, you still have a right to put the motion on forward.
Because it's not gonna pass, I don't have a right.
But, but again, we are, it's just table. In the meantime, we can look at the new budget and see what we can do to get these funds allocated in order to be able to pass these if you feel strongly, that they need to go forward.
Now, you said, you don't, you don't give a.
Well, I'll again defer back to the audience if there was anybody in the audience that had comments tonight on the non-agenda, please.
My is on your worst nightmare again, garbage.
Keeps me up at night, you're the alpha.
I pay my garbage bill, and it's something that's in your budget or whatever, but I noticed on my garbage bill that you have increased your rate fee from five dollars to seven fifty. That's almost fifty percent of what I pay to pick up my garbage. Is that usury?
You're not late, it's been wrote.
Exactly. But for the people that are.
She's my neighbor, so I don't take.
So, yes. And I'm president, so. But, I mean, and I, and I'm not late, but I'm just, I'm just, since you're in turn, is charging almost fifty percent usually? When was the increase voted on? I do not recall ever seeing it on my garbage bill.
It's always been in ordinance, it just wasn't enforced, they started to enforce it.
They, to increase it from five dollars to seven fifty?
It's always been in the ordinance.
It's, I mean, but you can increase it anytime you want to?
No, you have to amend the ordinance to.
Okay, but.
You're saying, you're saying the seven fifty, the.
Seven fifty is already in the ordinance, it's always been in the.
But it's always been five dollars?
Five dollars, we increased it when we passed a new, new garbage ordinance.
Is that?
It's in the ordinance.
I know it's in the ordinance.
Okay, so it's in the new garbage ordinance?
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven.
No, you did not.
I mean, I paid that before that was even adopted. So I, I would say that it, the seven fifty is, has always been there. I think at one time they didn't enforce it, but it, but it's always been there.
It's always been five dollars and was increased to seven fifty.
Let me, let me try, okay. What the, what the city clerk was saying is that the ordinance has, for the past number of years, however long, has said seven fifty, but administratively, it was left at five dollars, but has been recently adjusted to what has always been in the ordinance at seven fifty. I, I didn't know that it's changed, to be honest with you, but, I mean, we've never incurred.
I pay the bills at the house, so. Uh, it's just, uh, I never saw, I noticed on the bill saying it was going to increase. And unfortunately, there are individuals that are going to be late, you know?
It's a motivator for me, that five bucks, because I don't like, I don't like late fees, uh.
I, I, I don't like paying the online fee either, so I brought mine in your box up there, you know? I won't even put a stamp on it, I'll put it in the box, so.
Appreciate your comments, thank you so very much. Anyone else need comments?
Is it okay if he speaks? Yes, something's I to say.
Am I allowed to?
We have to.
Uh-uh.
Oh, so that is our first time here.
What do you think, or you?
You got time, if you like, you can fill it out after the fact.
Well, I would like to ask you guys a question. How much money are you guys spending on school education?
What?
School education?
School education.
In the last year's budget, it was thirty-five thousand, and it was allotted for youth and education.
Okay, so let me ask you another question. Um, what are they teaching at Irondale School?
Bear in mind, these, these schools are not Irondale schools, they are Jefferson County schools. And the money that the city puts into the schools is in extras of what the county, we're not required to put any money into the schools. This is something that we are doing to try to help our schools.
Okay.
So let me, let me answer your question, okay?
Okay.
Your question was, what are they teaching at Irondale School?
Yes.
Contrary to what a lot of people here would say, they would say, a lot of people would say they're teaching math, or teaching science, or teaching geography.
What type of math, science, and geography?
Okay, but that's not really what they're teaching. What they're teaching are boys and girls like you.
But what are they teaching?
My wife, my wife is a, my wife is a teacher, and she says she doesn't teach subjects, she teaches children. So the whole thing is a learning experience. I know that wasn't the answer to a question more, but think about it for a while.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, for your comment, appreciate it. Any more comments from the audience, all right?
So, so let me, let me.
Please, please.
Since, since I don't always respond to everything that is said here, but in the interest of full disclosure, we're spending much more than thirty-five thousand dollars on schools. And I, I, I guess that that's what most of you would say, because that's the number you see in the budget. We're probably spending close to a couple of hundred thousand dollars on schools. We have, how many firemen are assigned in the school? One?
We have one right now.
We have one full-time, one full-time fire position, two full-time police positions. In addition to that, but it works often, does projects for the schools at every time. So we're, we're close, if not in excess, of a couple of hundred thousand dollars to the Jefferson County school system that serves Irondale. And we should be proud of that.
We should, we should.
We are proud of that.
But I just want to, but I want everyone to get the full picture, that it's not just what you see on this piece of paper. That's, in fact, that's a very small part of.
And now we have a dedicated resource or, resource officer up there during school years, and then it costs money. Um, so not, yeah, definitely.
Kind of like what we did with Whistlestop this year, we did in kind, but we did through cash.
Well, now we did cash.
Oh, you may need to cash.
Yeah, but it, it just doesn't show up on the balance sheet.
Okay.
We got, we got four schools in the city of Irondale that our citizens go to, and one outside of the city of Irondale. I don't know if any of, you know, but Gresham is in Mountain Brook, and some of our, our students live in Irondale, go to Gresham. So we have five schools to support now.
But again, I really thought, at least Leslie pointed out to us that if we didn't change the wording on those resolutions, they would have been dead tonight anyway because of not posting the meeting beforehand. So she did correct that before it got to this level. And this is new news, again, it's tabled, so we can reconsider. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming tonight, appreciate everybody being here.
You can be free, sir. I'm great.
Well, it's next to one. Yeah, that's probably true.
Thank you.
My, my guest, my guest.
I gotta pay for all of them.
I mean, I've been.
It was a surprise.
It, it is, I have two new speakers. Uh, hi, I am a parent right here, and I wish to be in a PTA crowd. For about seven, eight years, she sat on state federal time one day. Oh, yeah, I'm just pretty interested.
If that pays as unanimously, then you do.
Something's.
That's, that's in the ordinance.
Grand, it's not going to stick.
That, that's the statute.
You don't have it? She's in the A. Now, what grade are you in? You're in nine, okay. So he's talking to the, uh, the. It is, it is definitely. You have to ask Jefferson County, for like, your college, these are Jefferson County schools. I know the city schools, this, like, they contribute. They just, they just contribute from the back door. The city, I mean, just provide all the access to schools. They don't actually buy the schools, that is, comes from the Jefferson County education. Burning down the cities, you know, to. Yeah, yeah, so, um.
Thank you, sir, for your questions, those were great questions. I hope I didn't, I hope I didn't stop you with my.
This is, this is Mr. Charles Moore, and he's the mayor. And what he wanted, what he wanted to ask.
That's what my wife teaches.
He can ask, this is, you'll say, is on this, as much as possible.
Great, yeah, great question, great question.
What he wanted to know was about the standardize test.
Well, that's kind of a lot to answer, but I don't teach new subjects, I teach, uh, she, she doesn't write that for me. So that's why we need to teach them.
Yes. I could, I could, I could, I could. But, uh, have you, they do have advanced placement classes. You just have to be a class, what is it, you have a management. Yes. What are you, I mean, that's. No, not, why not be programmed just advanced. Or the school. It turns into a lifelong thing, they don't. But if you give them a certain. Would this for three months? Advanced, advanced, advanced. Advanced classes, you know, like, say, he's. What, what, strange, you, it'd really be taking like seven. And they're praying, they just. No, no, you know, but if. Enrollment, well, and. But no, they, they, they. Yes. This is your.
Thank you.
This is less of your actual. See, I could, I could, I could, you're not going there, you're not pushing.
They're, 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 they're percussion, they're so young.
I'll tell you. Emma? You know, you're, everybody knows, did you go, did you go to, um, elementary? Oh, you know, Nikki Natalie. Natalie's, she plays golf. Over here, real well, and he was basically, so it's just. And, but she's very, Nikki's the class queen. Natalie, you, you think it would be a, because. It's very. But.
All right. Yeah, man.
And Nikki's the class queen.
So where do you want that?